Get everybody's recorders turned on here. Uh, within doing this, before I start the meeting, we have got to have some sort of order in here. Uh, I don't want, on the front page, again, me smacking the desk, asking for order. Um, that was a little embarrassing. Uh, we are not taking any comments until it's before we vote. We have got to have a meeting. We were here for hours before we even got past the first sentence. So, uh, we are going to, uh, call the order. We will take questions before we vote, okay? So please allow us to, to have our meeting to conduct the business, okay? I would do roll call. Lee Richards.
Here.
Shane Walker.
Here.
Greg Nevin.
Here.
Randall Boswell.
Here.
Geraldine Walker.
Here.
All present. Need a motion to, uh, approve the minutes from last meeting, held July the third. Shane makes a motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Randall, I have a second. Any discussion on the minute? No discussion being had, all four say aye. Any opposed likewise? Alright. Lee pass. Was here. All others for. Alright. Next, the following, approve the following appropriation resolution, twenty twenty-four, O eight twelve oh one. Uh, the tax reg, uh, levy resolution, twenty twenty-four, O eight twelve oh two. A nonprofit resolution, twenty twenty-four, O eight twelve oh three. Connie, if you would, go over the appropriation resolution, please.
Okay. Um, I guess Greg, you probably want to approach my next presentation because that's, that's what these numbers are.
Can you speak up?
So which one?
On the, on the, I forgot the appropriate, appropriation.
All of these numbers are.
Well, so which one is this one that you were presenting first?
This is, uh, the first page, and it is, uh, the six percent cost of living increase. So that's why you guys need to review it to see if that's the way you want to go before we move forward.
Did the salary committee, salary committee have a consent accord, how did we come up with a six percent number?
I just asked Connie, I said, we gotta come up with some type of solution.
Those two did not went through the salary committee first, you said this one person?
Well, we're just, this is a workstation here.
No, I didn't get this, this is a, this is not a salary making, this is budget making.
I mean, well, as I said, budget making.
Salary needed to recommend it to the budget to be, to be put in the budget before we voted to send this full court.
I'm not on the salary.
I know you're not, so you didn't have no right to come and tell her to do a six percent increase.
I'm just trying to come up with a solution.
Well, you should've come, it should've went through the salary committee.
Because I don't think the thirty dollars is gonna.
Well, the thirty dollars ain't, and I, and I got, I got no problem with the thing, but I wanted to go through the salary committee. I don't want you coming to do your share.
Well, I'm not, I just asked you to come up with it.
Yes, you did.
That's exactly what I asked you to come up with.
Nobody else, you didn't invite me.
Well, that's why we're here, we're meeting tonight.
It is, but did the salary committee recommend it to something on the budget committee? You want everything done, you want everything done in order, so.
It's good in order.
I'm not, my, my, I'm trying to come up with a solution with everybody that's, that's eligible. And all I, all I would.
We've got the salaries, we've not had a salary meeting first, though, before we can change the numbers in the budget that's been recommended.
Well, you got, you got three options here. You can go with either, either one of them here.
Salary committee.
And here's, here's what I was recommending. Instead of, uh, right now, since we're having hard times on, on this, and we're having to pay for extra property, let me talk, okay? And the reason I come up with this was because the employees need, need some help. And, and, and the three dollars is not gonna pass. I don't want this to go to the state because it's gonna look, make, make us look like a bunch of idiots. And, and I, I do good enough for that myself. And we, we need to be able to work this out and come up with a solution. That's why we're here, Randall.
We, we do, but it needs to go through the proper committee.
Well, I.
Might have committees if we're not gonna run it through them.
Well, they can explain it first, and then they can run it through them. I, I ain't got a problem with that, but all I was coming up with, if you got the six percent here, uh, what that would end up doing, it, uh, it's a six percent increase. It goes from a dollar ninety-seven to two twenty, two twenty, uh, five two four. And that's a fourteen percent increase coming down from a thirty-five. Uh, if, if you pay a thousand dollars on the taxes a year, you're gonna pay an extra four, a hundred and forty dollars. And I'm trying to get something that we can work with, and, and, and we can't look at the salaries right now, in my opinion. Because I, I can't tell what, uh, I, I don't know what, what each position calls for.
Well, we've gotta have.
And that's why I said we need to go, like, we can't do that in a two week period. So if we come up with a cost of living across the board, instead of the three dollars added on to each salary, we can revisit that next year.
Yeah, well, you always want everything run through the committees, for what?
Well, you can run it, you can run it through the committee. I'm just brought this up as a solution. If you don't like it, Randall, I can handle it.
I've got no problem, I've got no problem with it. In fact, if you look at the figures I've got right here.
Well, you tell me what you're looking at.
And it, it come up, but it's gonna go to the salary committee before it's brought to the budget.
Well, I'm fine with that. But I think here's where my solution is, and, and you can, you, they can run this to the salary committee, and you guys can work on it.
But that's, that's the fate, that's purpose for this meeting, the night.
The thing with the, the thing with the, uh, six percent is, can we turn over to, uh, the, the salary portion of this over to, uh, let's say, the, uh, deputy position? Um. I'm trying to find it.
Back page salary, updated salary. Let's give it one back, ready back? Here's salary schedule, here's this.
Uh, yeah, six percent proposed. I'm in the wrong section, man. Six, six percent proposed, there it is. Uh, see, we gotta get over to that, uh, lay store, to, uh, all the.
Six, five. On page five in the back, is it? Seven.
Page five.
Page five, very bad.
Oh, that's, that's by him.
I was a deputy salary, that sheriff's property.
Oh, there it is. Yeah, it's a very last page, dude.
Well, now, it's, let's see, yeah. This officer, page three, actually.
Okay.
Page three, uh, towards the back of, uh, yeah. It'll say, OCD salary, and then it'll say, officer. Yeah, the officer.
You don't have any home time.
I don't know what word that was, that's weird. So you're looking at a ninety-six cents with a six percent. And see, the, the only problem is, is the city is paying three dollars more an hour now. And so, we're losing them to the cities later.
Yeah, we are.
So, that's a ninety-six cents. And, uh, the study that the sheriff had actually was like five or six dollar increase. And we had, we had talked about a three because we couldn't actually get to that five or six. And this is ninety-six cents, and the, the reason why we were trying to do the three is because we couldn't hire anybody. Um, it, it's hard to, uh, take on new positions and being a, a, a source of training. Once we get them trained, they leave and go somewhere else. Uh, but ninety-six cents, uh, was gonna be that one. And, um, there was, uh, over on the ambulance service. Um, say, we're having a very hard time at the ambulance service. Uh, and out of ninety-eight shifts available, we have forty-eight covered. And we have people working, uh, thirty-six hours in a row, trying to cover these physicians. And so, let's see, let me get over here. Try to find where I'm at. Here, you're looking at a, um, eighty-five cent increase for an EMT, a, uh, we're on page three for the ambulance service. If you look at EMT, you're looking at eighty-five cent increase. It's, and then you're looking at, for an advanced EMT, you're looking at eighty-seven. And then for a paramedic, ninety-six. Um, so, we're, we're struggling hiring now. We've lost fourteen over the ambulance service this year alone. Um, another thing that I found out, and this is not, we could not ever do this, is, uh, Macon County, uh, how many, uh, about what, how far is, like, Red Bull and Springs and a place from here, about an hour?
Yeah, about an hour and a half to that level.
This, this year, this year, because they're in such a desperate stage for paramedics, they're starting their paramedics off at a hundred thousand dollars a year. And I said, there is no way or why. But that makes it hard on the little ones to, to try to retain, try to hire. Uh, you know, like, eleven is hiring, uh, a lot of hours, went, I think, eight of hours, was it eight of hours went to eleven? Several. But tha- that's what the six percent, what we were, what I was looking at. Um, we're still in that ballgame of.
And I, and I don't, I don't disagree with you on that, but right now, uh, and, and I, we, we need a, like I said, we need a, a desk audit on all positions, on each position, to see exactly what they are paying. I, I'm not smart enough to be able to sit here and tell what, what bookkeeper makes over here, or what, or what we need to actually do a desk audit on each position. But we, in a two week period, before we get this in, we can't do this right now. We need to work on that next year and try to get everybody's salaries up where they're comfortable, where they need to be. All I was just trying to do is come up with a six percent cost of living raise right now to combat the, the eleven and twelve percent inflation rate that we're all having to live through. And that's, that's all I was trying to do, and, uh, uh.
See, we're, we're so understepped. All of our people's having to work all the overtime and they're getting burned out. Uh, and we can't, we can't hire any new ones to give them rest, uh, from having to work because they feel like they have no home time, no family time, or anything like that. Because, uh, we're begging them to stay in work so that we can cover these shifts. Um, it, and we are, I mean, we're basically begging them to work.
They'll end up suffering burnout.
And that's what we're facing, and, and it's in the critical stage. And, and we're trying our best to be able to hire some, uh, to, uh, to help the ones that are working now. And, uh, that, that's what we're looking at because, uh, if, if you don't hire any, they're, they're in the same position for another year. I'm afraid that, uh, more and more is going to, uh, to go on. And we're gonna be in worse shape than we are now. We're in pretty bad shape now, as, as far as retaining employees and, and, uh, hiring employees.
Okay, we pull this up to the, and the, and the six percent might not pass.
I mean, I, I got no problem with the percentage of six percent. That's about, but, but I would think it should go through the salary committee.
Well, yeah.
It'd be, you know, before we sat here and say, yeah, you know, this is what we wanna do, because some of, because we've got, we've given the highway department two dollars an hour, was, because James has given them a dollar an hour. So this six percent may not, you know, we may not be putting none into the highway department.
Yeah, that, that may change.
You know, that, that's, that's why it needs to go through the salary committee.
I, I'm just trying to come up with a solution.
Or, I mean, I, I've got, I've got no problem with this. The lower we can get them, the better we'll make.
I wanna make an example over this for a, um, a paramedic would have to be here twenty-eight years to make what they would start out at, at the highway department. Twenty-eight years, a paramedic. On this pay scale, they would have to be here twenty-eight years to make what they started out at.
That's why we need a desk audit. On these physicians. That's why, that's exactly why we need a desk audit.
And that fellow sitting right there at the end of the table, he's here because he loves over the county. He can go anywhere and make a third more money than he's making here.
Well, all of them.
Uh, yeah, but I'm just, you know, I'm just using Chamberlain's name. Because he's, he's dedicated to the county, that's the reason he's still here, and he.
I'd like that, that it's long.
So if, if they get their two dollars, plus their dollar, that would make it twenty-two fifty an hour, they're nineteen fifty an hour now.
Who is this for?
A paramedic. At twenty-eight years would be at twenty-two dollars and forty-one cents an hour.
Is that any employee in the highway department?
No.
Paramedic.
That's, that's to start off as like a truck driver or something like that. We don't have their, their, they don't have a pay scale like a, like we have a pay scale here.
You have a man working at the highway department that has been out there for twenty-seven years, and he makes nineteen fifty an hour.
That would make him twenty-two fifty. But like I said, they don't have the pay scale.
They don't get years of service at the highway department like everybody at this does.
That's what I was trying to. That's why I was trying to explain. They don't have the years of service, but you're starting them out at right at the same pay as somebody that's been there for twenty-something years as well.
But you gotta start somewhere. Hey, I mean, you have to start somewhere, you can't start catching up.
Right. But this is a, this is paramedics.
Yeah, I, I know. And I don't, I don't dispute, uh, way underpaid sheriff bodies, what you're saying.
That's the reason why that, uh, the three dollars was recommended. And still, that three dollars, I've got that pay scale.
Hey, Randy, we said we were trying to see if we got a salary meeting, uh, July the sixth. They would, when they take this, all this, only fifty percent.
Hey, guys, can, can we have order, please? Thank you.
Can you all speak up to them when you're talking? It's really hard to hear you.
Yeah.
I'm trying.
Well, you, you're, you're pretty loud most of the time, but some of the other voices, particularly when I get down, it's just really hard to hear. I don't know if you guys can get a microphone up there or something?
Hang on, let me go back to where we had that. I've got it here. I brought everything from last, last week as well. Because we had took that three dollar back to look at it, the study over.
And Stephen, while you're looking at that, let me just, let me just say that since the last meeting, I did call our state representative, C Task, and talked to her. And she did say, because, you know, I questioned the whole time, why we had to do three dollars for everybody across the board. And she did say, in county government, you do always give, or try to always give, the same amount of money to every employee, not just public safety.
That's not fair to paramedics. Their expertise, they deserve.
I understand that, and that's what I've said the whole time, but I'm telling you what, C Task, who is our governing body for the state, has told me. That's the county government.
Yes, that's, that's.
I'm sorry, what?
Is that just a recommendation?
No, it wasn't a recommendation. She is our person, and she said that all the counties do the same raise across the board when they give races. That's what she told me, just yesterday's when I talked to her.
Well, that, that's, that's just a.
Okay.
Yeah, that's why the physicians need, the desk audit where it needs to be looked at, where to get some up there. We, we're not there yet. All, and that's, that's the whole reason I was trying to come up with a six percent this time. And then we can come back and revisit that next year, when we can get somebody in here that can do that. I mean, uh, when I, where I worked at, we had desk audits on our physicians. And they'd call you in, and they'd put your job objectives up here, and then you had to meet any criteria in here to be able, if you, if you didn't, you could possibly get your job lowered, uh, you know. But, uh, that's make sure that you've met everything, which, and, and here's what the cop wore, and, and paramedics are specialized. Sheriff's department is specialized. Bookkeepers got accounting degrees. But, we can't, we couldn't hire, it's hard to hire a bookkeeper up here with.
You don't pay the same for a teacher as you do a groundskeeper.
Well, I know that. I know, I, I, I grant you that, that's, that's why I'm just talking about six percent cost of living right now. Till we, till we can come back and visit, um, come back and visit, and get the physicians where they need to be. That, that's all I'm saying.
And they, they're not gonna be making the same amount, uh, like, everybody's not gonna make the same dollar. That's not, that's not.
Yeah, like the federal government, or the, they get a, Congress focuses on the federal government every year, how much percent, uh, cost of living increase they get. Social Security, the same thing. They give you a cost of living across the board on social security.
Yeah.
But dispatcher gets the raise, uh, the dispatcher's making more, uh.
Yeah, I'm not, I guess I'm not lying.
Hang on just a second, please. The dispatcher's starting out at eleven fifty an hour, and, uh, uh, clerks are starting out around the same, and it, it's hard to, uh, it's hard to hire anybody, uh, at that. And, and the job that they do and what we expect them out of them, because, uh, most of them's doing the job of three feet.
Why aren't paramedics starting out at eighteen and twenty dollars an hour instead of fourteen?
Well, they're not.
On what we're talking about right now, what are you?
They're not starting out that much.
No.
I know, that's what we're talking about. Why are they not?
Where are you at on that?
They, uh, I'm trying, trying to find, we're, I'm trying to find the pay scale from last week.
I know a couple of paramedics here that have to work second jobs because they don't, they don't pay the bills. And they work damn hard, damn good.
That's what I'm trying to say, they need to get three dollars at least. Connie, did you have the pay scale from the three dollars? I thought I had it, I've got it.
Is it in the old?
Yes, it's on my, or it's in my, that one's had.
Right here, okay.
I don't have it.
Hold, right here. This side, okay. Where am I at on this? This one was, this page is different in direction, that's why I think. So this is what they were trying to, this is an actual employee. So this says, I am, see? It wasn't, okay. Okay, that's one here, that's, okay. Uh, this one. Well, I've got, uh, this is, uh, this is some, this is close right here. Uh, that's them, it's right. It, uh, so these are for years of service, uh. I, I'll have to get the pay scale, but we're around sixteen dollars an hour, I think. Am I not correct for a paramedic? Yeah. Oh, you got it. But for, so all we gotta do is, it's in here. EMT is fourteen dollars an hour. Uh, and then advanced EMT is fourteen fifty, and then paramedic's starting at sixteen. And see, that's the reason why we can't, we can't hire them. Uh, and that's why we're, we're in a desperate shape right now. And that's the reason why we, uh, were trying to at least do three dollars, and that's still under where they need to be. But that gets us, uh, up there to where we could, uh, retain and maybe hire some. Because, uh, we did get Ball State this year, uh, was able to, uh, get, get Ball State to do the, uh, EMT basic and EMT advanced classes, uh, in Livingston at Ball State, got them signed on this year. And then, uh, we're doing, uh, paramedic classes in, uh, Cookland, Ball State. They couldn't move that class down here, but we can send them there. Um, so, we're, we're trying to train them, but then you're, you're not hiring one that's already educated. You're, you're hiring one starting off, and then once they get trained, they're leaving, they're going somewhere else. And other counties are buying their contracts out, even though you made them sign a tender contract. Uh, they're, that's why we're going, so. What, the reason why I asked for the three dollars for the emergency personnel was because of that reason, because
Courtney, can I ask, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
What's up, council, can you send one of them just go to get trained? And I know you're making them sign a contract, paying that back, and what, what's that cost note for, for the county to send them?
Well, uh, for the, uh, EMT classes, what we got worked out, it ended up being, if, if we sent individual people, it was around three thousand dollars a person. But we worked out a deal with them, so we get twelve seats at a time for seven thousand dollars. That's twelve, twelve seats, so every twelve seats is seven thousand, because you have, they, um, it's twelve people per instructor. So it ends up being around seven hundred dollars of people when we do that, instead of them getting college credits for it.
It's the reason I asked that, it's because I was curious if you revised that money and pushed it into more of a payroll store, totally, to get more of experience, versus trying to train new people. But if you're giving that cheap, it's coming out in pennies.
Well, that's for EMT.
Yeah.
Now, when you go into, uh, deputies and stuff like that, it gets more expensive.
Okay.
Yeah, I want to say that.
Your, your thousands of dollars, and then, of course, you have to pay them while they go. Um, so, uh, but putting all the time, training, and then as soon as they get out, they're gone.
But so you know this all back on years before you was even up here, that we didn't increase the pay enough as it, as it went along?
Uh, it's been like that for years. Uh, I went down and, and I'm not trying to throw anybody under the bus, but one, the, one of the offices downstairs, these ladies have been here for years. And, uh, ninety, ninety-nine, ninety-eight, they were making eleven thousand dollars a year working here, twelve thousand dollars a year. Uh, one of the, uh, they said one of the county executives come in, said they was making too much money and cut their pay. Uh, and these people are, you know, you're trying to ra- raise a family and trying to work here.
Well, they, they all understand my part on that. Did you say that the shirt, that the highway department made more than the EMTs? Did I understand you right?
Yes. Yes, ma'am.
And that needs to be reimbursed.
But I, I don't have anything to do with that. They, their pay scale is their pay scale, but, uh, all, all we can control here is, um, the pay scale for the other county employees. They're their own entity, we don't have anything to do with it.
So how do I give three, three dollars in the way, right?
That's what I, what I. That's what I, what I'm trying to do is get the three dollar raise for our employees on the county side. And in the budget, they had, uh, for the highway department to get the two and, uh, see nine-one-one to get a dollar and a half, cause they was gonna get a dollar and a half, uh, because the nine-one-one dispatcher started at eleven dollars an hour. Uh, so, it's, uh, it's hard, they're, they, they don't have a lot of people working there either, cause they can't hire them for eleven dollars an hour. Eleven, eleven, eleven fifty, I think is what they said, wasn't it? Y'all are on the nine-one-one board, what is... Is that around, is that price?
Yes.
Yeah. And so that's, that's the reason why we were asking, I was asking for the three dollars for the cost of living. Is because a, a lot of them ain't making much nothing right now and it's, it's hard to hire anybody, it's hard to keep anybody. It's hard to make a living. I mean, we, they can't even afford their insurance. Uh, we tried to get insurance rates better, uh, went down to capital with Senator Yager and, uh, Connie went with me. We took all of our stuff and, you know, trying to get family insurance affordable and we, we have three people, yeah. We did have three people, or we still have three people on family insurance. Uh, two of them's elected officials, uh, so I, I'm not counting them, but the, the, the one individual that works for the county that has family insurance don't get a paycheck. Cause it takes all of his paycheck to pay for just insurance.
Well, if we're paying the road department as much as we're paying the paramedics, we're in bad shape here in this county.
Yes.
I'm just trying, I'm just trying to, uh, to be fair, uh, and, and, and we're trying to get the budget where it needs to be, uh, to where we're not operating in the red, uh, to where we can, uh, retain the employees, uh, and, and, and be able to, to hire somebody. Uh, we want to be able to hire our hometown people, the people that we know to take care of, uh, instead of...
That's why I say we don't, we can't afford to buy more property. We don't need to buy that property when we got people that need to make more money.
Yeah.
Cause we don't need it.
Thank you.
Until we can afford to buy it. No matter how you put it out there on paper, how it sounds, whatever, we just don't need it right now, cause we can't afford it.
Okay.
Cause we can't afford to give them a raise, we can't afford to buy property.
How many county employees do you have? We have two hundred and...
It should be a done deal, because that call beaten, it shouldn't have been called.
Let's, let's, let's move past that. That is, that's not on this right here. Let's look past that right quick, okay? We were on this right quick. Uh, hang on just a second, please. We have two hundred and thirty something people, if I, if I'm not mistaken, around two hundred and fifty counting, part-time. Uh, somewhere around that. So, we have some part-time that works at convenience centers and, and things like that, thank you, well.
Are they getting a three dollar an hour raise for part-time people?
This would be across the board.
No.
No.
That needs to be for our state people only. Police, fire, EMS, EMTs, paramedics.
Yeah, yes, yes.
You need to treat it just like they did with social security. If you get a twenty dollar raise, take thirty-three back for better than that.
I thought it was right.
So, that's where we were at.
Can I say something else about the taxes?
Yes, sir.
Uh, there's, there's a program out there, it's called, uh, uh, Matt, you can probably help me with this a little bit better. He's on leadership over to Matt Copeland, it's called a tax freeze and it's for people sixty-five and over. Isn't that great?
Yeah.
We don't participate in it in the county right now. I called the Caribou's office today to find out why we don't participate and she said it's really hard to do this. But, I thought, I told her, could you put me through to somebody that can explain it to us? Explain it to the constituents, to you all, how that works, so maybe we could participate in it. I'm assumed to be sixty-five myself, retired, and I don't have much of an income either. I don't wanna pay no taxes myself. So, if she comes up here and, somebody from Nashville, I put a call into them, they'd probably be back today. But, they can explain to us this tax freeze and how it works. There's also a program now that you can't participate in, but through Peggy's office, if you're disabled or, or, or on a low income, that you can get, uh, some sort of package.
Yeah, I talked to the commission, the county, they, they do that.
They do do that?
That you gotta be sixty-five year old and I think it's, uh, combined, theirs is combined, uh, income, uh, I, I think it's less than forty-four thousand dollars a year. And then, at least sixty-five year old and then they got a freeze on their tax, on their taxes.
They have to do it every year, though, is that what you're...
Well, I'm, I'm not sure.
For it every year. I think so, I read today, I just...
So, the freeze program, you apply for it one time and that's it?
Yes.
The program that's with Peggy's office, you apply for it every year?
Every year.
The program that would, that Karen's office would facilitate, the state sets the income limit and it's already set for Overton County at thirty-seven thousand dollars a year.
I'm not sure, would we have to do like a, uh, is this a private act on there or just a resolution?
There's a list, if you go to the...
To do it every year and the county has opted out of it every year. It comes around, uh, for the county to do, I think yearly, and the county has always opted out of it.
What, who, who outside of...
The...
That's the county commission, that's the vote guy.
I think it's the commissioners.
That's the vote guy. I've never seen it done before.
Until Mr. Copeland addressed me last minute.
I mean, I, I didn't know nothing about it until I called the, with the motion.
But the county vote.
Yeah.
And she told me that it was, what they done was, it had to be forty-four thousand dollars total income and, or, or forty-four down and sixty-five years ago. And they can put a freeze on their citizens, but I'm not sure.
Would that grab me a payback, is that a program or is that what they put on the other people in town?
It probably, I bet that could be, yeah.
You would have to make the thing somehow.
I, I know.
That would be a question, did you?
That may make sense about Caribou and Peggy and see...
Well, Caribou will come up and explain it.
So, where are we at on the...
So, what, what, what I was asking, we was gonna, so the motion last week was to take that back and look over it and we... That's what I came up with. We was gonna take that three dollar back and study it, look over it and come back and then, uh, uh, Connie was running off that six percent, uh, today and she went over it with me and what I was saying, I mean, you're, you're less than a dollar and we're, we're, we're not there where we need to be, which...
But this, this...
Don't mind this, this is for right now. We don't have time to sit here and listen according to what Geraldine said, the lady she talked with C T A S.
It has to be across the board. Until you do a desk audit on each position and get, get each, each job up, up comparable where they need to. You're gonna have to have somebody come in and do the study on that and say, here's where we need to be and then we'll have to figure out where the money will come from.
But she didn't say it has to be, right? She said they usually try to, your mom said.
The C T A S, our C T A S representative now is Kaylee Walker and that's what she told me.
That they try to...
Huh?
That they usually try to.
That they usually always do, the, because she said, because I repeated to her what I understood C P N to say last week, that if we didn't give them across-the-board raise and some employee felt discriminated, then they could come back and follow discrimination. And, am I talking, am I saying this right, Lilian? Do you know about this?
Do what?
The across-the-board raises. Does it have to be the same or an employee who doesn't get the same raise as me can follow discrimination suit against the county? Is that right?
They can.
Anybody can sue.
Anybody can sue, but this committee is...
Uh, guys, guys, please, please, please.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a committee meeting. There is not any decision gonna be made on taxes tonight. These people are only gonna make a recommendation to the county commission. They have asked that you be quiet. If you want to write down a question that you're gonna ask later, you're gonna have that opportunity. We're gonna bring out a podium, I think there's a podium around here, is that right?
Uh...
Yeah.
Think it, maybe in there, if not, it, it got taken.
Well, that'll, that'll come back later, because after this, they've got to work. And this is gonna, you've heard them up here negotiating and talking back to each other, that's, they're negotiating. They're trying to do their best for the county of Overton. So, if you'll be quiet and let them work and then after they finish and before they vote, they are going to let you come up to the podium and ask your question. Mr. Barlow is going to limit each, each one of you to talk, what is it, two minutes or three minutes?
Three minutes is what they had on...
Three minutes, he's gonna let you, and that'll be timed, so that way everybody can have an opportunity to talk and get out of here and let these people do their work. Does everybody, anybody doesn't understand that? Raise your hand if you don't understand that.
You understand who can, who people...
Okay, so it's gonna be quiet. No talking, please. And if you want a piece of paper to write down your question, hold up your hand and we'll bring you a piece of paper to write down your question. Got it? Okay?
Can you answer the question?
Do what?
Can you answer their question?
I will answer their question, yeah, okay? Now, if you want a piece of paper, come over here and we'll give you a piece of paper to write down your question. Okay, I'll turn it back over to the chairperson.
Guys, please. Geraldine, there is a thing called a salary suit. That if an elected official, um, thinks that, uh, what they asked for wasn't met. They can do a salary suit like if, uh, John, that has asked for this because he desperately needed it or something like that and he didn't get, he can do a salary suit, uh, same as the directors, everybody that put a budget in. If they didn't get what they, uh, needed, of course, they can do that, uh, legally, that's, that's their right.
That happened in Overton County about thirty-five years ago. About thirty-five years.
But, uh, but anybody, anybody can sue over anything anymore. Um, somebody breaks in your house and they... Over and you die, they can sue you, that's all I'm saying. But anyway. Yes, sir.
I'm Shane Walker, District Two.
Why don't you stand up, Shane, and talk with them?
Yeah, cause my voice don't carry, I don't talk very loud anyways. But if you can't hear me, I'll talk to you out there if you have any questions for me. I just wanna say that, you know, I have a commissioner for District Two and that he brings up EMS and paramedics and I do work at them in service, been here for twenty-three years. And just want everybody to know that either way I vote, I'm not voting for my personal sake. If we have to, if you're a county employee, you have to declare conflict and I'm not gonna vote, just so I can get something myself and not benefit everybody. I just want everybody to know that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, so that's the reason why I was at the thirty, so that... Uh, I, I just don't think, see, where we need to be, um, I, I just don't think it would help matters to where it needs to be, we'll still be struggling, thrilled by the next week if not, then walking out.
If you look at this two dollar one on here, it's really not that much more than the six percent. And then if you take the highway one out of that, would it not be less? Because initially, we wasn't gonna give the highways anything, right? And then when we went to the three dollars, it was added in so they could, they could give their people with location two. We were gonna pack your team and they're gonna give their one that they always do.
So, you wouldn't have to on a six...
We wasn't gonna give them the two because, um, we, we wasn't gonna give them the two, but give them, uh, nine-one-one a dollar and a half. It's because nine-one-one's gonna give a dollar and a half to bring theirs up three. And then, uh, uh, James was gonna give a dollar and then they didn't want him to give the two dollars to make them three. But, now originally, we wasn't gonna give them, uh, the highway department in debt, uh... But in, in this, when you're on the six percent, it's, uh, point one-two-eight-six and over here on the three dollars, it's still one-point-two-eight-six. I found that didn't, I found that didn't change when the percentage dropped from the three dollars to the six percent.
Which one is that?
That's on the highway and public work.
Under the three dollars and under the six percent.
Under the three dollars and the six percent, they're still getting the same amount.
Right, yeah, because nobody told me to change that amount yet, so...
It's like, need to go through the check.
So, if y'all do salary at six percent, then I would change it in here.
And that would drop it to two.
Yeah.
That would drop to two-two-five, is the motive.
Yes, down to like two-twenty, I've already did it. But, um, it just depends on if it's the six percent or whatever else. So, as of right now, it isn't at the unneeded amount.
Two-twenty, that's the...
It was point oh-eight-five. It had been point oh-eight-five. So, if we, you know, if you backed it all the way back out, that's what it was saying, then if you increase it six percent, then...
What's the difference in the, uh, two dollar and the three dollar and the penny if, if, uh, I, I don't, I'm not seeing it on here.
Yeah, if it, if it goes like from a fourteen, instead of a fourteen-point-three percent, it would be nineteen-point-five eight percent.
So, five percent, but what's the...
It'd be about fifteen to twenty percent. The penny would be, uh...
I, I'm, I'm just trying to find the total on here and I've... About eight cents. Wouldn't it be, if I'm seeing the total, according to the figure here, be about eight cents?
Look on the next page of my history section.
Sorry.
No, that's okay, I'm, I may not be going ready to talk.
Or math.
Two dollars, three dollars.
That's the thirty. These two are the totals for each, from the two dollars and the, and the three dollars. So, it looks like it's a hundred and...
Could you pull it by me?
So, that's a three penny difference. So, it's not, that's what I was talking about, it's, it's three cents, three penny difference between the two dollars and the three dollars.
It was, yes, you're right.
It's not a drastic amount, that's what I was talking about. It seems, it's paying three dollars more than we do. No, it's right here.
From two-thirty-five to fifty-two.
I'm talking about the total, if you do a three dollar versus a two dollars, it's three cents, or it's not even three cents, it's two, uh, I've gotta get my calculator.
It'd be a, it'd be a, it'd be a...
According to this, seven, seven cents.
I mean, it'd be a third.
It's twenty-nine cents, twenty-nine point oh-four minus twenty-six point eight four two percent. It's two-point-one-eight pence. For the two dollars versus the three dollars. Two pence.
Eight cents.
Well, I'm just going off these totals. Well, I'm just going off these totals.
Two-point-two-seven.
It says total, actual cost, total, or tax pennies, twenty-six-point-eight-six for a two dollar, and then twenty-nine-point-oh-four for a three dollar. So it's two-point-one-eight. The total of the tax pennies. But I'm going by the actual total with all the departments, solid waste, administrative, ambulance, and sheriff. The total pennies of a two dollar raise versus a three dollar raise is two-point-one-eight pennies. Am I not correct on that? Two dollars? Two dollars versus. Well, I apologize on that, 'cause I was only, it said two dollars and three dollars, but it's fifty. So you're, uh, uh, two-thirty-five, two-thirty-five minus two-point-two-seven. Eight-point-away. So, I didn't understand, I didn't hear what you said, what, what were the?
Ben Graves, remember I was asking him, going to make a recommendation, send it to the salary committee, and look at the six percent over the, uh, the three percent that we have presented, our three dollars, and then see what that does to the bottom line, 'cause that'll take, the, probably take the whole dollar and a half out of nine-one-one, and the two, the whole two dollars out of highway department. And that'll drop. That'll probably drop us down.
They'll get a six percent.
You can make a judgment of doing that here.
If they still get a six percent.
Yeah, they still get a six percent. But, but we won't know the true rate here until these, until this, uh, comes out of the public weight and, uh, nine-one-one will know what, what to recommend the tax rate.
See, this has the general fund, solid waste, and then the highway, so if you take the twelve, uh, point-eight-six, and it was, uh, point-eight-five, if you take that out, that would get that where it, where it should, uh, where it was. So twelve-point-eight, that was like four pennies or something.
Yeah, take it down to two-twenty.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, you know.
So that would be.
But if you add six percent back.
What's the six percent?
If, 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 if they were six percent. Are you gonna say, like, are you gonna say for every?
We're just giving sixty.
You can add on six percent.
I was gonna recommend sixty, exactly, to the salary across the board. But then, but the highway department, that will, that will probably cut them before they're gonna get any, and nine-one-one, even though they probably deserve it. We got, we gotta get it as low as we can get, or it ain't gonna pass.
I'm gonna get it where.
I'm trying, I'm trying to, you can, uh, understand the employee, um, because I understand the six percent, you're talking less than a dollar, and we're still two dollars and something less than what the city pays.
Yeah, we're not there yet, though.
We're not there, the, the, I, I'm just saying, the six percent, uh, it's, it's something, but it's, it's not, it's not enough for our, that's what, it's just my recommendation, of course, I don't have a vote on it, I can just make a recommendation. Um, I'm just trying to look out for everybody involved as well. I know we gotta have it as low as we can, we don't wanna raise it up as much, um.
Well, we need to get it raised up for an inch, but even.
That's where, what I'm saying, what you need.
What I'm saying, for me to say that three dollars for each position, you know, that's not, that's not, that's not, yeah, it's not reasonable, I mean, you're, and like, like you said, you got three dollars, there's, somebody said that, uh, there, there's different, you know, there's different levels with the, of, uh, training on these positions. But all I'm saying, I don't have the education on it, you're gonna have to get somebody in here. I don't think anybody, anybody else knows exactly what these positions call. Where you look at, you look at the state, the grid on them and see where they come to, you know, state's gotta pay a rate on, for a, uh, officer two, or an accounting one, they, they got them broke down into those minute areas. But we need somebody to come in here, here's our positions, where we comparable countywide, or county, statewide with these here. You know, a loca, location, area location for a county our size. And that's, that's how you're gonna have to, that's how you'd be fair with it. And that, that's, and, and all I was looking at was just a six percent across the board right now, cost to live and increase, which is needed.
It is, it's desperately needed.
And that, and since we, you know, we've incurred debt on, uh, extra property and the law, and the, and the lawsuits, and it's just, uh, I've had a lot of people telling me this is just not the right time to, to spend this type of money, and.
They'd love to give it more than one percent a year, eighty-six.
I don't feel like we need to cut the nine-one-one dispatchers out, many things.
Yeah, I don't.
Well, I don't either.
That's probably the lowest paid county job there is.
In the most dreadful.
Yeah, the most dreadful. Some of the calls they have to make to listen to, you know.
Six percent across the board, but they flip it to salary committee. Go, go.
We can, we can go over and see what, see what it does from county employees, highway department.
It's on here, six percent. Is it on the pay scale?
No.
No.
It ain't there.
We don't, we don't think they're, they're sal, the highway.
No, I'm talking about other, all the county employees, what it would bring it up to, uh, I mean, I think we went over that a minute ago, it brought it up eight and ten.
Yeah, everybody with those two.
So what's the motion?
Yeah, I'm making a motion, send the salary committee, let them work on whatever we're gonna do and see what they recommend back to Bud. We, we gotta salary down Bud's seat next week. And we have the meetings together, and both committees can work together on it, and.
So you're making a motion to send and have salary and budget work together on this?
Well, salary and budget both are meeting, what day next week coming?
Tuesday.
Next Tuesday, one of them from five, five-thirty, or four, four.
Four-thirty-five.
They'll both meet right after each other, and they, or they can just, they can be combined, and salary can recommend to Bud what, what they come up with, and then Bud, it'll be, Bud then can either pass it on or reject it.
So the motion is sent to the salary?
Yeah.
Uh, motion by Randall to send this to salary, um, is our, uh, say.
Yeah.
Great, say, all right, discussions.
It's not for just setting one certain thing, it's just discussing all of it, right?
Yeah.
We're not cutting nobody, having nothing, guaranteeing nobody nothing, just discussion.
Then it'll come back, send the salary, and then it'll come back to budget. Any other questions? Any other discussion?
The extra property that you bought, so that would be ten more pennies that we'd have to add.
We're on this right now, Sandy.
We need to vote on this motion first.
We'll bring that up for sure.
Good.
Does it have to be six percent, can it be five, four and a half? Written in stone, it has to be six.
Just sending it over to the salary for them to work on it, they're passing it off to the salaries.
Don't vote rated, hopefully we get a rate, whether it be straight across the board or whatever, for what merit you do, what you can do, what your camp will do. Unless you set everybody the same rate, turn it off, that's wrong.
Guys, let's bring it back in. Any other discussion at the table, Gerald? Lee Richards.
Yes.
Shane Walker.
Yeah, so it's just a discussion.
This is all, the whole, the whole pay scale. This has nothing to do with just animal services, the whole pay scale.
Kinda said, you've been included in a.
Yeah. Uh, Greg Nivens.
Yes.
Randall Boswell.
Yes.
Geraldine Walker.
Yes.
So all four, Lee, Pat. All right. Well, so if you're sending that over, then the next part, we can't do number five. And then we can't do approving the salary schedule. So new and old business.
The property.
Okay.
So you, you're saying that you've already purchased the property, so I'm saying we rescinded the minutes. We voted to rescind the minutes on that meeting you all had, so by rescinding those minutes, that whole deal is done.
You want me to explain it?
That we have, that we have to go back. I don't know when you signed, I don't know when you signed it to buy that property, or with your special call meeting that you all had with the commissioners, but it was just wrong. It should've been in the afternoon, at the county court, we should've voted on it at the county court, that's when it should've been. Not in the middle of the week, not in the middle of the day, when everybody could attend, not when people are on vacation. When you knew those people were gonna be on vacation. And those people that were gone, please let me finish, let me finish. The people that were gone, were gone, gonna vote no. And I think you knew that. Just saying, that's just my opinion on it, but I just don't think we need to buy that property.
Okay, so now.
Keep that, keep that, uh, health department right where it's at, remodel the thing, we don't need to spend that much. If we don't get that grant money, so be it, they'll give us extra money to remodel. Remodel the building, move them into another building, temporarily remodel. You know, we're not made of money to do this.
Now, I will, let me, let me kinda explain this. Well, I'll, I'll let her explain that to him in just a second, but I need to talk for just a minute, 'cause, um, now, that I get a chance to talk, I am not a truck.
I didn't say you're the truck.
You did last week.
Well, I didn't say you're the truck. I just said, I just said you're sneaky about doing something.
This is between us right quick, just hang on.
You're sneaky about doing something.
You called me a truck. I'm not a truck.
You listened to the takeback, I never said you.
We did, but now, let me, let me go back here in just a second, now, you have a chance to talk, let me talk. We took a, uh, we took and called a special call meeting because I had to straighten something out that was, uh, spoken wrong, and I had to do it as soon as I can because I thought that it was owed to every single person that, uh, the misinformation that we had, they spoken the right and the truth. There was twelve people out of fifteen here. I can't help that they're on vacation, they're on vacation every other week, and I can't help that.
Well, whoa, 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 whoa. You're out of town there, you're out of town there, you're on the way to.
Well, that's mighty odd.
I'm on the tax.
Please, let me talk, stop, please. I can't help it. I called the meeting, you knew that we were having a meeting, you, Greg, and I can't remember, the other person was not here. I didn't do it because you, I knew you were gonna vote no. That has nothing to do with it, but there was nine, nine yeses, two no's. And that was a legal meeting, and as soon as that legal meeting was over, it was binding. Ms. Lily Ann, would you like to explain?
Yes, once, you do not have to wait for the minutes to be approved by the, the county commission. Once the vote is voted the majority, then that is the vote, and that's, that's done, it's done business, you don't have to wait.
But it's a people's right for that to go before the full county commission.
It was.
To be voted on, and we rescinded those minutes on that.
It was illegal.
You can't rescind it, you can't rescind it. Uh, the vote was nine to two, if, if you weren't here, I'm sorry. Uh, but we didn't have a majority of the county commission, we couldn't have held a meeting without it, you all know that. And nine people voted yes, two people voted no, and that, that was what happened. We have a videotape of that meeting.
Yes, I understand that.
Have you seen the video?
I have. But the county commission, several people that voted yes for that, rescinded their vote.
That was illegal, you can't do that, you were voting on minutes.
You have to rescind it at the county commission.
The minutes were for to approve those minutes, to approve those minutes, what meant to approve whatever he did, and.
Approval of the minutes were just minister, it's not, it's not.
Well, it, it was just wrong.
It, well, I guess you just have to fuss with the state law.
I'm not, I'm not trying to argue it to you.
But we've always, but we've always.
It's just going around things to get things done, that makes me mad.
But we shouldn't be spending money, I would have rarely spent money until the minister approved the next meeting, and it, and it probably should've been discussed with the legal, it should've been discussed with you first.
Well, uh, the contract was signed, I think it was thirteen days after the vote, after the majority vote of the special call meeting. And that contract is binding, I think there is a contingency in it that it has to be, uh,
It has to appraise.
Appraised to be at least the amount that.
But there's, but there's probably no other way we can get out of it, right?
No, oh, no. It would be.
It's a voting board.
Be quiet, please, please, it would be a breach of contract.
And they, if, they, they wanted to push it.
Yes.
I guess they wanted to push it. Well, the only thing I was looking at, you know, we said we couldn't find any property.
I ex, I explained that.
I, you explained that we couldn't find any property, well, I found seven acres over here right across from the, uh, uh, the, yeah, National Guard Armory that's flat and level. They're wanting four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars, we wouldn't have to pay anything for it on that piece of property, that's, that's fifty-seven thousand dollars an acre, first seventy thousand dollars, so that's a half a million dollars we could've saved on that. And I, I know I'm looking backwards.
No, right.
But that, that would've cost the taxpayers a dime, maybe, what, maybe ten thousand dollars more on the piece of property instead of four-hundred-and-fifty-something thousand, but you could've bought that seven acre. And what's nice about that piece of property, it's, it's right there, it's flat, it's right there across, it, it's about, it's about a mile away from the, the other property, and it's right there across from the National Guard Armory. If we ever did have any type of pandemic come through again, the National Guard had to get involved, well, you'd have the health department right there. And I know like this is hindsight, but I, you need to start including the commission on the minutes.
We looked at that, remember I said we done a site study?
They didn't, they didn't.
We looked at that, there's such a flood zone around there, if you look, that creek that runs around the whole property, runs down the side and around the back.
And it's not, it's not.
There's four acres of flood zone.
It's not a sewer.
There was just a little flat, and then it drops off all into a flood zone. And you know who used to own that, before the owners own it now? The county. The county sold it. We did own that piece of property at one time. But we looked at that, and I wanted to go to that, 'cause I looked at that first, that was one of my first recommendations, 'cause it's.
But it's, but it's in a flood zone.
It, there, yes, half of that is in a flood zone, and it goes around the side and around the back.
And it couldn't been prepped to be able to.
Well, look how much money you.
I mean, they're sell, they're selling it right now for, asking fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred dollars to make it for it.
I, I asked for a price for it, but whenever, like I said, we done the site study, you have to do the building up of the land and all that. But I had looked at it, I just say, we looked, uh, but, any other new real business?
But, oh now, okay, after we had that meeting, we rescinded their vote several others, why didn't you not talk to us before you signed the papers to, you know there was a problem?
Now, see this. When the meeting was over, and. I, I would like to talk to you about this, me and you, instead of in front of everybody, because what I have to say, I don't wanna say in front of everybody.
Why?
Okay.
Why is that?
We pay your kids.
This is why, okay, and, and I'm sorry if I hurt your feelings. Alright, you voted yes, and that was your vote, and that was gonna be your vote, and then right after you, Darwin voted no. And then after the meeting, you're like, I wanna rescind my vote, you do this a lot.
Well, the reason is.
You look around to see how everybody is gonna vote.
Do you hear what Paige reminded?
The reason is, you told us false information.
I told you the correct information before you voted.
That's why we had the other meeting.
That's why you voted yes after I told you the right information, go back and look on the video.
And since then, since then, we found out we do not have access to eighty-four, that's why I rescinded my vote.
You have, you have the access to the road.
I know that. You know, but that's a shooting for another reason.
You, you have a right of way in the bank, and you ask the state to put it in.
Is there anything else on the older new?
Any older new business, please?
I don't have any.
So do we have the next meeting July sixteenth, is that the next scheduled, when is the salary? What time? Guys, I can't hear, please. Salary meeting is at what time?
I'm not sure, but if, if you wanna have them all together, we can, we can do them both at four thirty.
The budget and salary at four thirty.
It makes it really hard for them to be here at four thirty.
Uh, me too, I actually would have served about four and a half, four and a half years. Why can't you have it at six o'clock, like tomorrow, people, everybody gets off work, you don't want too many people to be.
Why don't you have it where the whole commission can come and have a say?
For the whole county.
It needs to go to the salary and budget committee.
Which one's biggest?
Right now, it's, it is scheduled, just, just on calendar, we, we did put Tuesday the sixteenth at four thirty for the budget, which, salary was at, I think salary is before. Oh, before or at?
Can we reschedule salary at five and budget at six, because salary is gonna take more than thirty minutes.
We haven't, we haven't published it yet.
Can we, what is today's date? So you've got six days, we're fine, can we do salary at five and budget at six?
Five o'clock, are you okay?
Are you, you're on salary, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, so budget will be at six on the sixteenth of July, uh, and, uh, I'm gonna write down salary will be changed to five. Alright. We have no other business, entertain a motion to adjourn. Well, I mean, we can answer questions. We're not voting on anything. Have a second?
Yes.
Randall, any other discussions or anything, all four say aye.
Don't you all wanna run for county commission now?
Absolutely.